Mine.
No.
I was coming.
We're on.
Yeah, nothing. I was gonna open the hearing at seven o'clock. Gonna have to pass over the minutes because we didn't get them yet. So we're gonna do the first variance, which is twenty-four Taft Avenue. Because of the MGL, chapter forty-eight, section ten, a public hearing will be held September twenty-one, twenty-three in the Menon Town Hall at six P M for a variant twenty-seven, I mean twenty-four Taft Avenue. Petitioner Thomas Wickstrom seeks to vary this from the front side setback plan. A single family dwelling. That's all.
Thank you.
Paul, the other boy.
Oh, glad to. I was like, I'm sort of rolling in. Good afternoon, Mike. Good evening. My name is David Burton Azzi. I am here on behalf of your applicant, Thomas Wickstrom, as trustee of the Twenty-four Taft Realty Trust of two thousand and twenty. The petition relates to the property at twenty-four Taft Street. The subject parcel is a pre-existing non-conforming lot with an area of five thousand square feet. It was created by a subdivision plan back in nineteen seventeen, and it's been in the same configuration since that time. It's situated in the residential zoning district. Partial had been improved by a single-family dwelling with detached garage, but both of those structures were raised many years ago by a prior owner. Per the petition, the proposal is to construct a single-family dwelling substantially similar to that shown on the plan that was submitted with the application. The plan is to center the dwelling so as to minimize any zoning deficiencies and to tie into the existing tight tank that was approved by the town back in two thousand and two. In order to do so, the applicant needs zoning relief in the form of a variance from the minimum front yard, forty feet versus fifty feet required, and from the minimum side yards, eleven feet plus or minus versus twenty feet required. I would suggest to you that the application satisfies the requirements in your bylaw and in the statute for the grant of a variance. The parcel is very narrow, fifty-foot, hundred-foot-long parcel, such that a literal enforcement would prevent the applicant from constructing a suitable dwelling on the property. The proposed use of the property as a residential dwelling is permitted within the zoning district. The proposed development is consistent with others generally in the vicinity of the property. In fact, it's an improvement on what had been there previously. I think you have a copy of a plan that was prepared in connection with the approval of the septic.
No, I didn't hear that.
Okay. You have that one?
Yes.
He's coming around with that now.
Thousand and two points.
So that that plan there shows the the original house on the lot that was previously raised. And this proposal is an improvement from a zoning perspective to that. As you can see, the garage was right on the back inside yard boundaries. And on one side of the property, I think it was four and a half feet approximately from the lot line. I would suggest to you that this dwelling, as constructed, would not negatively impact values of other properties in the area, wouldn't propose any any traffic issues, wouldn't pose any safety issues, and would not detrimentally affect generally the public. So with that said, if you guys have any questions, we are happy to try to address them for you.
I didn't know that. Go ahead.
Is the pre-existing foundation there gone or?
There's nothing there. It's just a tight tank.
Okay.
And they end up well. There's the and everything else is gone.
Um, no.
Cap Avenue, and I would like to request a sidewalk that has all of the boundaries of the property indicated. I have a survey before any decisions are made.
The boundaries are there now, I assume.
It's a little vague. There is conservation woods that let's.
This chairman, we had a we had a survey done, an instrument survey done in advance of filing the petition, and we've submitted land based on that instrument survey that shows where the lot lines are.
That's all basement. And one property was next to it was building, they have a foundation and created quite enough, I don't know, an unusual amount of water runoff because of the four-foot depth of a small frost-based cellar and property two over. I just recommend a sidewalk.
There's no.
There's nothing. There's nothing there. It's just a vacant lot.
No, it's a vacant lot.
We're not asking for any relief with the rear setback either.
And I would think as part of all of the other approvals for this dwelling.
The building.
Right, the town.
They go for the building permit, that's gonna have to be done. What do you give me?
From telling themselves a little nice lawn over there, so.
Yeah, improve the looks of the place.
I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that it is conservation woods and should be respected as they are. And the boundary should be there, and the equipment should not allow to be used as as part of the. So.
It exists a lot.
It appears that the lot lines are pretty well defined by the existing structures like the stone wall and the the adjacent property here.
Yeah, it's also very tight.
It's a twenty-eight yard feet back to the back of the lot. We're within the the rear yard step back.
Anything to know in the back of the property line? Getting pre-existing. Oh, that's okay.
The town amendment.
It appears it's just barely on your property, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is there a dispute over the property line or something? No, is there?
Concern though, that that area should be naturalized. It's not.
We're not gonna do any work anywhere off of our property.
So there's no work being done off your property?
Nowhere nowhere near even back there.
The water runoff from that. But there is a watershed behind that. That's what that 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 woods is. And in a rainstorm, a severe rainstorm, the amount of water, I'm sure you've all driven down Taft Avenue in the rain. It really is. It is not favorable to a full foundation, and I have very, very great concerns of that.
I would suggest that these are not summoning issues. This will all be addressed as part of. This is all conservation building. There's a permitting process that we'll have to go through. This is just.
No, okay. They're not increasing the impervious amount of area on the property from the existing.
Not from that two thousand and two point.
Yeah, no.
Probably minimizing it because we're getting rid of the driveway.
There'll be a walkout in the front garage under. Yeah, garage under. Yeah. But I mean, you can't go putting house on stilts. And if there's any drain, if there's any water issues, it'll be addressed.
Totally down to home, everything. My septic system's thirty feet away. My well is fifty feet away. My beach field, not my beach field. I just I just have concerns and I wanna have them.
The property has a tight take, so we won't be impacting.
Although although any water would be shedding to Taft Avenue, doesn't doesn't go.
Yeah, it appears.
The property to the left or the right.
After.
Yeah, elevation is all towards Taft Avenue.
It appears the topo, the grading plan, that's towards Taft Avenue.
And any drainage that needs to be addressed.
I have no concerns.
Me neither. I think that the concerns addressed can be addressed in other five of the boards that are going to review different parts of the process.
Get names. Get names.
Damon Tenille.
David Burton Azzi.
Michael D.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I would suggest to you that it's a meritorious application, and we would respectfully request that the board.
A motion to approve the variance as requested in the application.
Second.
Hi.
Bye.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, next on the list. Public hearing for one sixty-one Millville Millville Street.
Good evening. Scott Ambler, representing the petitioner, Michael Salvador, on this variance application. Chairman, Mr. Board members, what we're seeking is a variance. Okay.
The class of the MGL chapter forty-eight, section ten, a public hearing will be held September twenty-one, twenty-three in North Menon Town Hall at six P M for a variance at one sixty-one Millville Streets. Petitioner seeks a variance to allow creation of divisions, helping to free single-family buildings serviced by a common driveway.
Good evening. As I started off by saying, what we're looking for is to obtain some variances for this parcel of land. What we have here is a very large lot, forty-seven point five-five acres of land off of Millville Street. It has, it's been in existence for quite a few years now. It has a hundred feet of combined frontage for the lot. When you look at the plans that were submitted, the variances that would be sought would be a one-hundred-and-thirty-foot frontage variance and a one-hundred-and-fifty-foot width variance for lot one, a hundred-and-eighty-five-foot frontage variance, and then a hundred-and-eighty-five-foot width variance on lot two, and similar one-eighty-five frontage and one-eighty-five width on lot three. These lots that would be created, as you can see, the bulk of this large lot sits approximately around four hundred and feet back off of Millville Street. What's being proposed is they would be, the access would be a common driveway, which would be a subject to a, you know, written agreement as to the maintenance and, you know, maintaining and improving of that same by the lot owners. Exactly. It would be recorded at the registry of deeds. It would be noted on every deed conveyed out so that there would never be any question of it. There would never be any issue of the town having to have any proposed cost associated with it. There was a draft common driveway agreement prepared and attached to the petition that I submitted for your review that you could look at, and if you wanted town council to comment on it or make any proposed edits, you know, that would be fine by us as well. These are going to be three, what we would call estate-sized lots. The forty-seven acres would be broken down into three lots, the smallest of which would be twelve-point-seven acres, the largest of which would be would be twenty-one-point-one acres. Given the size of the lots, there would be no issues, obviously, with regard to citing wells and septic systems within there. As some of you know, I know that Mr. Van der Slus was involved way back when. Right now, there's a permitted equine horse facility on this property. We went through quite a bit of litigation back in the day, finally received all of our approvals. The proposed use, which is allowed and which my client has been working on since getting the final approvals in two thousand and twelve, included a single-family home with an in-law apartment, a two-bedroom apartment for quarters for employees, and a one-bedroom apartment for employees with quarters for employees. So it already has the right to have three separate living units on it. And I would suggest to the board that what we're proposing today would have less of an impact on the town, the abutters, the neighborhood, any of the town services than a fully operational equine facility. We'll only have three residential homes being serviced by this common driveway rather than having, you know, people boarding their horses, having horse shows, trainers, birthday parties, horse, you know, riding lessons and so forth that would be accomplished if it was built out according to the variance we received in two thousand and twelve. You know, just to hit on the major areas that are at issue and concern of the board, again, you know, this proposal over what is already permitted there would not increase any congestion onto Millville Street. As stated, the the traffic generated by the three homes would certainly be less than what would be generated by the permitted use now. It certainly wouldn't be causing any overcrowding of the land. As stated, these would be single-family homes on substantial lots ranging from twelve to twenty-one acres. There would be no issues with any, you know, rear, side, front setbacks, given the size of the lots, obviously. It would conserve, obviously, the value of the land. The homes on these lots would be, you know, built. They would be custom-built homes, preserving the value of the properties. It certainly would be in line with what the neighborhood is, which is all single-family homes generally in that area of town. Again, not a substantial detriment to the burden on the schools. You know, there may be some additional students, but certainly not something that the school population couldn't handle. And, you know, again, the proposal tonight does not have any conflict with regard to any of the surrounding properties or direct abutters. And given that it's zoned for residential use, it's the most appropriate use of the the property. Essentially, you know, as I said, the the permitted use, you can see from the decision that was granted back in oh eight, allowed for, you know, three living units on the property, a twenty-four horse stable, you know, some riding arenas, you know, and various outbuildings. So I think that this one is certainly less of an impact. My client has been working on the property since he finally got through all the litigation in two thousand and twelve. What's, it's just his his goals and his intentions have just changed. He does not personally want to pursue the the equine facility any longer and wishes to, you know, go this route.
I mean, I think from my perspective, the three, I mean, the three lots are already big enough to, without any sort of variance needs. Like, like you said, the equine facility would cause more traffic than these houses, so I think it makes sense. Makes sense to me, so.
No concerns either. Again, as you mentioned, it's four hundred feet, if I'm not mistaken, from Millville. We're up Millville Street. And again, you know, as Tom mentioned, the lots are so big in terms of, you know, side rear, I have no concerns either.
The only thing I have, I'd like to have the attorney look at the agreement, make sure everybody's.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah.
That's fine.
I'd like to have that.
Is that?
So we don't have that.
It's a very oddly shaped lot. That there are pieces of it that comes up and around up in the corner?
Yes, the purple is the the perimeter of the lot.
Okay.
The purple is existing, so that's not changing. That's already done. Then it's proposed.
Yes.
And the common driveway area has already been been deemed adequate access, you know, when we got the approval for the equine facility. It's and so, you know, just so for the board's knowledge, with the side shoulder, we plan on having, you know, two-foot-wide shoulders on on the side of the common driveway. With those in play, you're looking at a twenty-one to twenty-five width, you know, travel way.
Yeah. Yeah. No further development, not that you're going anywhere down the road if somebody wanted.
No, no.
Try to divide one of those lots.
It's my intent to retain. It's my intent to retain one of them for myself.
Yeah, I knew that. Anybody in the audience say anything?
I'll make a motion to accept the variance as written in the application.
Second.
Hi.
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 Thank you very much. Thank you.
Excellent on the agenda, Route eighty-five Realty. We have a letter that we received today asking for continuance. Our reading. On behalf of the applicant, Route eighty-five Realty Corporation, and due to the uncertainty of the final outcome of the superseding order of conditions that Mass Department of Environmental Protection has been working on for about a year, we respectfully request a continuation of the above variance and application schedule to be heard at the September twenty-one, twenty-three meeting. Your next scheduled meeting. We are anticipating having the superseding order of conditions issued by that time. We request that that meeting for the variance not be opened. No discussion other than the continuation in reference to the application take place. Thank you, John Donat. The motion continue.
One second.
Motion to continue?
Oh, I thought you said you were making it. I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion to continue the hearing for twenty-nine A Hartford Ave until the next scheduled meeting.
October nineteenth.
Which is October nineteenth. I. So, sorry, who's who's filling in for Jim? Like, just just to be clear for like minutes or raise.
We wasn't sure. I don't understand a question.
No, because there's three people on the board and two alternates. Who who is voting for who is voting for Jim?
I am. I'm the all. I'm thinking.
Right, but which?
We only need three.
Right, but which alternate is is the voting member type is my question. I mean, I don't care who it is. I just wonder. I don't care either way. Okay, just just. Everybody's been voting on everything, which, you know.
We expect the figure. Yes, gripe will take care of that.
Yeah, all right. Sounds good to me. So as everybody's on board, I'm cool.
All right, the next one is a twenty-nine Maury Street. The cons with MGL chapter forty-eight, section fifteen, a public hearing will be held on September twenty-one, twenty-three in Menon Town Hall at six P M for an appeal of the Building Commission's decision regarding twenty-nine Maury Street. Petitioner is an abutter who claims there is commercial activity preparing some residential property.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Henry Lane. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Audi this this evening. I'm sure you've all had an opportunity to review the application, but essentially, we're we requested the building inspector to enforce the zoning bylaws with with respect to this property some weeks ago. And the building inspector apparently came to the conclusion that there was not any ongoing violation. However, I guess it's always a little bit of a problem when you make a spot inspection, but Mr. Audi actually lives next to the property and sees the activities that go on on a daily basis. And his observation suggests that there is, in fact, ongoing, in fact, daily activities relating to a landscaping business and perhaps a wood processing operation going on. So we're basically asking the the board at this point to direct the building inspector to enforce the bylaw or in the alternative to issue orders directly. Because the board does have the authority of a building inspector with respect to zoning enforcement as the same power as the building inspector, so you have an alternative in that regard. But I suppose what you're really interested in is what Mr. Audi has observed, and in fact, he has some some video of the activity, but I will let him explain to you exactly what he's observed.
I Alfred Audi, thirty-three Maury Street. There is a landscaping business been going on for many, many years. It's five now. There is, the drivers come, get out of the car, get in the trucks. He has downsized somewhat. I guess some of the equipment has been sold or taken back or something else like that. But there's still a landscaping business daily. And then when it comes to the weekends, it's the same thing that happens through the weekends is Sunday is maintenance day. So we take all the equipment out of the trucks and straighten the blades, make sure all the equipment's working correctly. I mean, it's a constant from eight in the morning to three, four in the afternoon on a Sunday. I have all the videos of him operating. I don't know if you need to see or something else like that wise. There's nothing stopped. It's been cease and desist for three times, been to court three times for this. It it doesn't stop. It's like today, what we did on Monday is we took all the trailers to another location so that it doesn't appear that there's anything in the yard right now. And this happens every time that there's something that when it's brought to attention, that this happens, that they disappear. And then two weeks from now, it'll come back. So I mean, that's what we're doing is run and hide. I mean, we built up some fences from out of the house so that you can't look into the backyard and see the equipment anymore. Now it's hidden behind of the fences.
Built the fence that they did.
No, he's built the fences. You know, because he had, he bought a few equipment to make fencing. He had probably. equipment to make fencing, he had probably, I'm gonna say there's, oh, two-hundred-and-fifty logs brought in. There's a, I don't know, you have piles, piles of wood for cutting for supposedly he's gonna burn it, but there's so much wood there, there's no way that it could ever be burnt up or over the years. I mean, you can. You can cook this all you want, there's a business going on, and like I say, this has been going on for five years, every day, all the equipment, all, everything, I mean, we had back goes bobcats. We have everything that you could actually need to do any kind of landscaping. Trucking trailer out of there daily, go with all the equipment, then come back, get another trailer. Put that go on, put this on, that on, it's been working out of there ever since that he's come to live there.
What? Yeah, I have two questions. First question is, um, did John Erickson give a response as to why he couldn't be here tonight? Or is he invited?
He was invited, um, and I also C C'd him when I sent you guys the agenda again.
Okay, and he just hasn't?
He's not responded.
Okay.
I have his, his letter, I don't know if it's.
It's, it's in, I, I, I read it.
Yeah, that's what I have.
Yeah, the second, if we were to order him to enforce the zoning and basically say cease all commercial activity, I mean, assuming it's the person in question has said they've already ceased all commercial activity, what, what changes? You know, um.
I presume this might be the property?
Yeah, okay.
We want to.
Got you, so.
Get some input from the, is appropriate to?
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you want to speak to?
I mean, I do have a yard that I can keep all my stuff.
Okay. Okay.
Never said I can never bring any of my equipment or trucks to my house, said I can't store them there. And the wood processor I have, I don't sell it. I can cut wood, I can burn it, whether I have a million logs or five logs, I don't think that matters. And I do have a sawmill that I uh, I do make my own fans, uh, started to. But I also have another job that I got to be able to, you don't make any more. I work for the state itself. Where I have a landscape company.
You heat with wood? You heat with wood, right? I heat with wood. I do the same thing, I heat my whole house with, I go through.
About seven, eight quarters a year.
Well, I've learned more than that. I have a lot in my.
So like I said, whether I have one or a million logs.
I, I don't see that, my own opinion, I don't see. Large unit, selling and making firewood, so.
And you guys will develop the location of the property where I store my equipment. And actually, my company is selling, so whether I bring all my equipment, I, I anyways to my house, it's on my first name, trucks, trailers. So my name is not the company. Bring all my equipment home to the house. Whether I have one every day or one in all the weekends, other events don't matter.
Well, good. If you're conducting commercial activity. Well, I, so you made the point about maintenance of the equipment, which.
I, well, I want on Saturday or Sunday, I change it.
Okay.
Whether it's for my company or for myself, it should matter.
I don't make the laws.
No, I.
Yes.
I said, I was never told I couldn't bring my trucks to my house, and I'm just told I can't store it. That's important to the biologic. And if you complain about commercial vehicles, it's for other people that are on that same street that have commercial vehicles.
How often in a given week would you say you can bring your equipment? Just typical week, give me, you know.
Usually I'll come on, usually I'll bring it on a Saturday, I'll have a Saturday and a Sunday, and then I bring it back Sunday night or Monday morning.
So nothing Monday through Friday?
Monday through Friday, excuse me, part of it. Last two weeks ago, my big truck broke, so I had my trailer and my small truck at the house until I can bring it to my shop.
Now, is, is it just you that's servicing this equipment? I mean, so is he employed by the company?
Yeah. It's just a service, okay, so go call them.
Got you. How many employees does the company have? Three, if they're going out, let's say on a Tuesday to service customers, they get the equipment from the other property, Oxbridge?
Yes, that's right, four seventy-seven Hartford Ave.
Okay.
We have the video.
This is all a story.
They show it in the morning.
But I, I found a store on the lawn and stuff, I don't see that.
No.
Forget the law.
Yeah, alright. Forget the word.
I mean, three workers show up every day, pick up the equipment at this property, drive off, come back. Every weekend, nobody tried, changes their, their blade on their lawnmower every week, except him. I did, you change your.
No, I'm saying it.
Once a week.
You check.
This is. I have videos of, we're not changing blades, we're grinding, we're straightening, we're, every blower has to be started, every weed worker has to be tested, every lever blower, everything that comes out, it's right here, everything comes out of the van.
Maybe we should set it, structures on time, the only deal is between eight in the morning and.
I think the bylaw hits ten.
Yeah, by law, I'm saying, I'm just using that as an example.
He's got a business, place a business in Oxbridge, that's where the equipment belongs, that's where he should be servicing it. Uh, why are we even having this question? Why are his employees coming to the property? You do may change your blade every week.
This is not true.
Park it in a trailer every, and take it out every, every couple of days, or do you leave it at home?
I have a garage.
Well, okay, ask him if he keeps his equipment in his garage six days a week. No, he doesn't, he has it in a trailer, he takes the job sites, brings it back.
This is daily, this is daily, this is not somebody's telling your story, okay? It's right here on, I've got him since two thousand eighteen.
We paid John Erickson to.
I understand, it's not, he's not, I've been to court about this and everything, cease and desist, nothing has happened. There's not been a fine issue, there's not been anything, so why stop?
Friends' house, because you guys drive so fast. I was working at home a lot then, so I saw and heard everything, and I asked him, why do you need all that wood back there? You have kids. That's a hazard. If I had kids, you wouldn't have wood up to your sale. Almost is why.
They're playing in the compost pile.
He told me he was gonna start selling wood from his backyard, so this, that he's burning it for himself. I've seen trucks go up with wood to his house. I've seen.
It was wood delivered last week.
Said that too, isn't telling.
And what'd you say about, what'd you say you even do to my house?
I didn't say I was gonna do anything to your house.
But I might argue on that.
I never said that.
Yeah, keep it simple.
But it's been five years.
Feed up and down the road, tell the police.
It's been five year, we have called the police many times. It's not happening.
We can't do that.
I understand.
Doesn't matter, he still brings it home on a roll.
Once, once.
Alright, I think nothing to do with it, sir.
The point is.
This trailer is.
Stick to the facts.
Exactly, yeah.
Take, he is taking wood in, and he's told me he wants to do what the guy on Room sixteen does and cuts wood and sells it. It's exactly what he said to me. I had, had no problem until it would lie up.
I have a sawmill and I have a wood processor.
And he purposely said, he doesn't care what anybody thinks or says, he's gonna do what he wants to do.
Yeah, so that's up to John Erickson to enforce the bylaws.
When is he coming?
We can ask him. That's okay.
It's been going on for almost two years.
Five.
Yes. Five, I got it right here, from two thousand eighteen. I got every one of them, he has, he has depreciated my land probably a hundred thousand dollars of what he's done. I mean, where do I go from there? This is all because of the town not watching the situation, he has everything be down to the back of my land that when it rains how it is, and that's a hill up there and all ledge, the water's running down, I've got a trench probably about three feet now.
You're talking conservation on that.
Well, they, they've been up there and that's, nothing has, nothing has ceased for five years here, nothing. Because of the conservation, because of the zoning board, because of the Board of Health Conservation Commission, eh, Mike was up there looking at the whole situation. There's nothing stopped, there's nothing has to stop, nobody's binding him, nobody's doing anything to make it cease. Cease and desist means stop, next week he's got the trucks there. You, I, I have it right here, I mean, it, it's not stupidity. I mean, if you want to see what he did Monday, is he took all the equipment out of there because he knew he was coming to this meeting. So he cleaned up the yard for that at a certain point of time. Now, give me a couple of weeks, and because we've had this meeting, it's not gonna be, but it's gonna be all right back there, he has to, the guys meet him there. All his workers arrived and cars are parked in his driveway. This is not a story, now this is not a story.
Workers are never there for the equipment.
Let's just, don't tell the lies.
That time three weeks ago and Saturday to bring it there, so they read back, you're saying that's the only time those workers?
Much.
Pretty much, was pretty much me.
Every day. This is what happens, every day we leave seven o'clock with all the workers, now we go cut a lawn, we fill up the truck with the grass, the gr- the truck comes back, empties all the grass in the back with a couple of workers, three, four, maybe at this time. Then he gets back in the truck and they go, and they hitch up to the trailer and go to the next job. As two o'clock comes, I guess that lawn must be done, now we come back and we dump the grass out of there. It's a business working out of a residential area, it's not a joke, it's not a lie, he doesn't know how to say it. I mean, he's gonna run, if, if you're telling him that everything that he's doing okay now, then he's gonna do it all next week too. It is a business running out of a residential area. I can't say it enough, I can show you every, I can show you what happened all this week.
So if we order, if we were to order John Erickson to enforce the bylaw, what would that mean?
If you get it before ten?
With the court, they lost.
Yeah.
It's. Did that right here.
Well, no commercial activity. Right, so we're clear?
So if you have a trailer with your name on it and it says MG, M G B with landscaping, are you telling me that's commercial?
I think it's a functional ownership.
You can't do that. You can't run a business and not have the name on your vehicle. You. You cannot, you cannot run a business and not have your name on the landscaping vehicle.
I mean, you just, you, you, when you settle a business, you can have a sole proprietorship and still do commercial activity without being in the name of a business, so that doesn't really.
Okay. We're not, we don't have one person with a lawnmower doing somebody's house, this is a commercial business going on. So do you probably, ask him how many customers he probably has, what do we got, seventy-five, a hundred? What does that mean?
I mean, are we, are we going to view the gentleman's video?
No, why don't you just see the video? It, it, it's, I'm not like, you know, you, you can look at all of them.
On the, uh, alternate location in Oxbridge, so you have a lease, uh, in your company name for that property? Okay, you have, uh, storage bins there for bulk materials? Okay, great.
At twenty-nine Maury Street?
Okay. And you have a written lease for that property, okay, great.
What was he?
Who's that with?
That's.
Okay, great. Just.
That doesn't cover what's going on though.
Well, I.
You can go get a garage for a hundred dollars a month. This is all something overhead, I have a business in Oxbridge, is it okay for me to build a garage at my house and start doing it? Nothing to do with here, then bring me to court for it. None of my business, you have degraded, you have degraded my property probably a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, I, I, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say I would, I would feel a lot more comfortable hearing from John, being here and talking, questioning John Erickson about this.
Me too.
And why, how he came to this determination, and I don't feel comfortable making a decision until
No.
John comes to a meeting.
John has got to be.
Absolutely.
So. So I, I would like, I would like to contin- can we continue this until such time that the billing inspector is able to make it to this meeting?
Can.
Oh, I'm gonna make a motion to continue this hearing until, um, until we're able to have a meeting date with John Erickson here.
Okay.
I'll contact him.
Yeah, thank you.
Those are not keys on the.
The nine, the October nineteenth.
Yes, he can make, uh, October nineteenth perfect, if not, we will push up to November.
I'll ask him if he can make it on that date.
Okay, thank you.
So it's worthless of me having a thousand videos of what's going.
I would like to hear from the billing inspector how he came to the determination he did, and why.
We'll look at those zoning books, see what kind of home occupation you can have and what can happen.
Right, I think we need to review things a little more before we.
Can you come up to my house, John?
What?
Can you come up to my house?
I can do anything.
Please?
I know you'll do.
I know you do, I'll be glad to have you, please.
We have, we have a second for that motion, right?
Yeah.
Oh, alright.
I mean, we're off the wrong track, yeah. Alright.
Hmm.
You know, we're, there are too many things going on.
Very right.
Trailer trucks, we talked about this one.
No, 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 not talking about, we're not talking about trailer trucks.
No, I, this may may work. That has a landscaping business still, I know.
You are, you are welcome to ask, is it the?
It's none of my business what they do, that's why I don't care.
That's right.
It's, but you, you have the right to.
I'll bring it up, like, like I said, it's really none of my business, it's okay. Just like I said, I mean, it's on the language, I don't actually view it, what's going on, but then maybe I'll have to do it wrong. It's, it's none of my business, nor do I care.
It's, it's not part of the meeting, so if you want to make a complaint, you should do that, yeah, but we just don't want to hear it.
Yeah. Is that a vote? Did I get a vote?
We did.
Yeah, we voted to continue.
We're gonna get John Erickson to be here, October nineteenth, depends if he can be.
Yeah, we will, we'll be in contact with all the parties involved.
I don't want to make it a night, Keith, and he can't be here.
You have to mail another letter and, are, are we going, we're gonna mail another letter for the next date, or are we gonna contact the?
I can contact everyone, it doesn't need a formal, um, because it's a continuation, so, uh, we can plan for the nineteenth and, and I can let everyone know if it's not going to be that.
Okay.
Um, if you want to, um, give me your email, I guess, do also that, make sure you're.
Are we down?
Yeah, you can come over here. Certainly not on messages.
Thank you. Yep.
Thanks, have a good night.
Good night. Yeah. Any topics now anticipated within forty-eight hours?
I don't have any. Matt, you know, Jen's been off for three weeks.
Oh, I didn't know, sorry.
I don't know, I talked to him today and. Good to have you talk.
Have a good night.
You too.
Good to have you talk.
That's too bad, gives it a lot of pain.
Psych on bed?
Yeah.
In Boston. I needed a motion.
I will mostly adjourn until October nineteenth.
Okay.
That goes.
Alright, well, you guys have.